This is the Board of Trustees' regular meeting. Today's date is eleven, nine, two thousand twenty-one. It is seven thirty P. M. We're meeting twenty, twenty-one dash twenty. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk. Oh, okay, okay.
She's working the crowd.
I get it, I get it. Get.
Tell me how you're doing.
I'm good, buddy.
I'm good.
Good.
Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Boarder.
Present.
Trustee Sack.
Present.
Trustee Pembroke.
Present.
Trustee Mallow.
Here.
Trustee Olenichek.
Here.
Trustee Desmond. I'm sorry, Trustee Stalker.
Here.
Trustee Desmond.
Please, uh, before to pledge?
Shouldn't allow that.
Okay, a motion to allow, uh, trustee Desmond? Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any negatives? Hearing none, please. Join me for the pledge allegiance. Veterans salute, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Trustee Desmond, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, I can hear you too. Uh, Madam Clerk, public comments, please.
Chief Vittorio, up first.
Uh, yes, I am a resident, first time caller.
Here for a friend?
Keep it short, will you?
Yeah, I'll keep it short, I'll keep it under three minutes. Uh, I'm sure you're all aware, but yesterday evening, about three o'clock, we were monitoring, uh, our radio traffic when dispatch advised us of a pursuit going through Alseb coming north on two ninety-four. So, sure enough, I was giving the village manager the summary, I'm like, okay, it's coming to Oaklawn, so I shut down my computer, I pulled out my, uh, notepad. Sure enough, couple minutes later, crash, uh, Ninety-Fifth and Oak Park, hit a, uh, traffic sign, they're running. Uh, Gary had pursued a stolen car out of the city that was wanted by, for vehicular hijacking. Apparently, they were in Gary looking at war crimes. They pursued him into Oaklawn and they crashed. That was right about shift change. So, we had day shifters in the locker room, we had our afternoon guys just heading out. So, my window, I see the parking lot, I see the squads. Our afternoon guys, they're all flying out there, they're running out to their cars, they're loading up their gear. Couldn't have been prouder of them. We had, uh, day shift guys coming out of the locker room, didn't even have a uniform on, still in T-shirts, throwing their vest on, they were flying out there too. Couldn't have been prouder than those guys. So, they all got there and, and they did what they do best. Um, they set up a perimeter, uh, they began a search, they couldn't find the subject, called for a canine. Uh, canine struck out. Uh, sergeants organized a grid search, uh, we wanted to make sure that there was no gun left in the park for, for the kids to, to locate and, you know, possibly hurt themselves. One subject was already in custody, so we were sitting on the car, we were sitting on a subject, we're trying to find the second subject, we're trying to find a gun. Um, so they did their grid search, you know, no luck with that. Uh, as they're wrapping things up, Sergeant McNeil, who's the, uh, the acting watch commander, he did a great job, not only watch commander, getting guys out there after everything settled down. Uh, he decided to go out there and help out with the search. And they're doing a secondary search, as they're about ready to clear the scene, and Sergeant McNeil saw something under a car in the, the mazelot. In the mazelot and hit it with his flashlights, a pair of ear-jonins lit up. So, uh, he, they were able to, to, uh, grab the second suspect. And, you know, they, I couldn't have been proud of those guys, they all did a great job, thanks to Sergeant McNeil's quick thinking, organizing the response. Uh, you know, he did a great job. I don't think he'll be able to get his head out the door now, though. And I couldn't be proud of all of them. Uh, Officer Brandon, well, next to him is Lieutenant Kern, Officer Brandon Collins, one of our new guys, Ben, he was out there running with the big dogs, he's in training. Officer Jimmy Jack, over here is Sergeant O'Neill, Detective Wayora, and Detective Fontaine. Of course, after I briefed, briefed you all through email, you guys all responded, you know, great job, great job. I don't deserve it, they do, so tell them what you gotta say.
Chief, I was, uh, over at a senior center event today. I bet you at least a half a dozen seniors were aware of what happened. Social media gets the word out there pretty quick, and they, they couldn't compliment our police department more.
We're really using Smart nine-one-one, so for those of you in the village, it is a great system, it works well. If you want to stay updated on, you know, public safety alerts, please sign up, you can go to our website, there's a link right at the bottom of the page, Smart nine-one-one, and you can get all the notifications that we put out.
Thank you, Chief, thank you, guys.
Yes, thank you very much, Ellen.
Another?
Walter Dunnett.
Please step up to the podium here and state your name, you live in Oaklawn?
Still. Eighty-four.
Okay.
Pass these down, a couple copies. So, I'm speaking for probably six or seven neighbors, there's a couple here, couple couldn't make it. We just have some safety concerns that, um, keep going on and on, I haven't been here in quite a long time, so I'm kind of rough at it. Number one, um, nobody's stopping them for the stop signs in Oaklawn. I talked to the officers, they, they tell, they told me two weeks ago, we don't have stop signs, we got go signs. There was an incident on our, on Mayfield between eighty-seventh and ninety-first, the guy was doing... When I'm cutting my grass out there, I always put out my garbage cans on the, on the curb, so... Just in case, you know, it's, it's, it's crazy. Uh, number two, and I don't know how much time I get, but we'll go real quick. We need four-way stop signs at eighty-eighth and Mayfield to control the traffic. There's no stopping when everybody comes out of Burbank and flying through to, down to ninety-first, there's only one yield. So, these guys are flying, there's been, this is my neighbor Craig, there's been accidents at his house all the time. Nobody stops. The UPS guy doesn't stop, the FedEx guys don't stop, some of our neighbors don't even stop. Pretty sad. Number three, uh, many of the trees are blocking the lights throughout Oaklawn, mainly in the First District. Some are blocking the stop signs by Harnoo on Austin Avenue. We'd also like to see the repainting of the street crosswalks and, and add stop signs also on Southwest Highway, north of Ninety-Fifth Street by the high school. When they did the construction between there and the, um, on Southwest Highway, between the school and the, um, car dealership, they didn't stripe the center, they just let it go. So, um, a lot of kids crossing, so need those lines put in. Number five, um, streetlights out along Southwest Highway near Meade Avenue, wrong on that, two or three that have been out for quite a while. I know sometimes they just get a whole bunch and they do it at one time, but they've been out for quite a while. And my other neighbor who's not here, because his wife said he had to be somewhere else, um, Fifty-Ninth, Sixteen, Eighty-Eighth Place, it's got a large pothole, um, and it takes up two garbage cans holes and, and width, that's how big it is, so we'd like to have that, uh, before the winter gets here, get taken care of. That's it.
All right, thank you. I, you know, I would suggest that you reach out to your trustee specifically on these requests for stop signs. There is a process that we have here, we have a committee made up of our residents who analyze, review, and make recommendations to this board on stop sign locations. Uh, you could probably work best through your trustee, or you can get the petition if you just want to do it on your own from, uh, Don McKenna down in the lower level of the village hall, and get some, get some signatures from your residents to prove it. As to, uh, the trees, we have a policy in place here where every neighborhood has their trees trimmed in the parkway every five years. Uh, if there's an emergency situation, as you described here, uh, if you can let me know, and I'll let our street department know, where those, uh, lights are being blocked, we can address that.
Right through Oaklawn at nighttime and...
Well, we do have a tree clemming policy.
Put me on the payroll, I'll, I'll go mark them down for you. Getting back to, to getting hold of the trustee, I do have his number. I've reached out to him before on certain items, like snow plowing, that there's only one truck for the winter that plows, and the plowing in the, in the First District is terrible. Been there since eighty, eighty-four, and this gentleman can attest to it that plowing sucks in the winter. They just, one truck just doesn't do it. My other neighbor who's not here, supposed to be here, she reached out to, uh, trustee, it took him two months to call her back.
Okay.
The three minutes are up now.
Three minutes are up, sir.
It's a long three minutes.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you for coming forward, and I will pass on what I can here to our street department for you, okay?
I get to go home hands down now.
Madam Clerk, do we have any other?
Craig Atkins.
Hi, everybody. Uh, let's see, I, um, I've lived at eighty-eighth and Mayfield, eighty-eighth Street in Mayfield, uh, since probably about nineteen seventy-eight, and, um, we have had traffic problems up and down that area, mainly coming off eighty-seventh Street, but it just seems like for the last, what, six months, you say? Since, yeah, last year or so, we have had some real problems with hot rodders and speeders. And, um, last spring, this summer, it would not be uncommon to have somebody flying down the street seventy-five, eighty, ninety miles an hour, I mean, the house would shake when these people fly by, it's kids, you know, and they're flying by and they're just, they're just gone. I don't know what you guys can do, I mean, what could you do? You know, if you can't put speed bumps everywhere, we do have, um, stop signs, um, east and west on eighty-eighth and Mayfield by me. I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, you could plant stop signs everywhere, but these kinds of kids, they just go right through them anyway, you know? But see, the real problem with this thing is, if you get a T-bone in the middle of one of these intersections like this, and somebody really gets hit, they lose control of the vehicle, and at that speed, they're probably gonna wind up in somebody's living room or a kid's bedroom. Now, every one of us out here have kids, grandkids, and the kids are out there just playing in the summer, having fun, you know, and sometimes between the, they're between the, um, sidewalk and the curb. Uh, God forbid that one of these characters is flying along there and loses control somehow and hits one of these kids. So, we're open for suggestions. Tim, if you got anything, you know, you know where I'm at, we're at eighty-eighth and Mayfield right there.
Right next to your sister-in-law.
Yeah. But I mean, if anything, uh, if you can do anything to help us out, look at this thing, I mean, what are you doing throughout the village? I, I understood even two years ago, you really, we're probably not alone in Oaklawn, but, I mean, what do you do with this kind of thing? These people are nuts, how would you, why would you do that down a side street, flying like that? We had a couple of drag racers. And she's got the video, you know, they lined up, waited, they revved up the engines, and then they just took off south in Mayfield, and when they go flying back, like I said, you got dishes in the house that are shaking, you know?
One-thirty in the afternoon on Saturday, kids on the bikes?
Kids on bikes, kids out there running around. I mean, maybe you want to step up here for a second, talk a little bit about your side of it as well. We're open for suggestions, I mean, we, we, in our area, right up and down, that we probably need, we probably need some help. I don't know if you need to put in more stop signs, again, I don't know if they would pay attention to them, but some of this, it's just, it's, it's enervating, I mean, if you saw the way these kids...
Sir, your three minutes are up, and I would ask the chief of police to look into these complaints and see if there's anything our police department can do. And you're correct, stop signs are not gonna stop drag racers. If that should happen, dial nine-one-one and give them a description of the cars. Even if their police aren't there to arrest them at the moment, they're aware of the cars and the descriptions and can keep an eye out for those particular violations.
Well, I think Oaklawn's in the, in the neighborhood have cameras, you know, so I mean, if we could zoom in and get some of these license numbers, that...
Okay.
But is, is it true that they, they really can't do anything, they can't go out and arrest anybody or give a ticket unless the officer sees it himself, even if you have it on video, is that true, or?
Well, that's true, sir, the courts require evidence and testimony.
Yeah.
But thank you, sir, for bringing that point to our attention, no... No, sir, three minutes, that's the rule, I can't make an exception to it, you had your three minutes. We're aware of the problem. I'll ask the police, chief police, to look at it, and I would suggest that if you think stop signs would help control the flow of your traffic, follow the procedures of the Village of Oaklawn, and we'll erect stop signs. Okay, thank you. Moving on to number four, conflict of interest, interest disclosure, any trustees have any conflict with anything on these agendas? Hearing none, we'll move forward. This is a presentation of the donations from the Fall on the Green, the three programs, our Courage Program, Park Lawn, and Live Like Abby. Is somebody here from the Courage Program? Please step up. Uh, trustee Mallow will present you with the check.
Thank you, Mayor. Just so everybody's aware, they're in, they're in the Fall on the Green that we have every year, and we really appreciate our, our village showing up, um, and we really, really appreciate the sponsors that help us out, um, during this time. As the mayor said, we do have, uh, three, uh, organizations that benefit, um, from this. And thanks to the major sponsors that we have, Man Carey Chrysler, First Midwest Bank, Oaklawn Bank and Trust, and the Hubbard Street Group, so, um, I think Molly's gonna go first since she's here, so, uh, we have our checks. And again, this is a, this is a, this is an effort by the Village of Oaklawn, put together, um, to do this, so, uh, we really appreciate our, uh, our town and, and the trustees here that really make this thing work, and, and our volunteers, of course, our police and fire.
Can you put that in the ATM?
Thank you.
Is there any?
Take it to the back. I don't, I don't think she can cash it, but...
Usually I give this back.
Just put it in the ATM. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Park Lawn, anybody here from Park Lawn?
Nope.
You want to talk about it a little bit, Paul?
Sure, I mean, Molly, did you want to come up and say something about the Courage Program? Just real quick, I did, I did want to offer that option.
Oh, sure. So, my name is Molly O'Grady, I'm the director of the Courage Program. The, um, Courage Program just celebrated its forty-first anniversary in August, in October. Um, and we are a program that helps single moms and their children, we help with all kinds of their needs and education, housing, finances, everything, um, and with all these generous supporters, we run solely on donations, always have, we have no funding, and, um, we have helped probably over twenty thousand families, so we're, we're so grateful to everyone. It, it's a ministry, it's a unique ministry, and we appreciate everyone that recognizes it and supports it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Amy.
Park Lawn's not here, but...
Okay, go ahead.
There is a big check here.
Okay, well...
I did not bring Park Lawn in, but I know they do help, uh, needy, needy kids, uh, they have a program over on Hundred Eleventh Street that, uh, that supports these kids, and, and they come and they work, and, um, they really, they really do, uh, good things for, for special needs kids. Park Lawn.
What, how much is it?
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand.
Very good, Park Lawn has been a charity.
Uh, Terry, hey, Terry, that's in my district, if I could say a word. Park Lawn, uh, works with developmentally disabled children, they've been here forever, they do a great job, they got a facility on Hundred Eighth and a facility on Hundred Eleventh where they handle different levels of, uh, uh, young adults, uh, and adults with developmental disabilities. Uh, they give them jobs, they, uh, the ones that can handle them, they make them, uh, a service to our community, and they, they really appreciate it, especially appreciate it by me because they see their work every day. Thank you very much, Park Lawn.
Thank you. Do we have anybody from Live Like Abby here? Please, step up.
You can step up front, that's fine, that's fine, you're allowed. So, uh, again, um, Live Like Abby group is also twenty thousand dollars. You know, this, this, this group has, uh, been near and dear to my heart for, for quite a while. Our family knew Abby, um, and, uh, you know, she's missed every day, she's remembered every day, so... This group has done phenomenal things in our village, in our town, and, uh, you know, speaking to Kevin Wujek, who is the father of Abby, um, at our Fall on the Green event, he really, really appreciated this group and this village giving him an opportunity to spread the word, um, regarding the Live Like Abby, Live Like John group, uh, that does phenomenal work, so, um, you want to say something about the Live Like Abby? Sure. The girls can hold that.
This is, uh, this is pretty incredible, actually. All things being equal, I wish I wasn't here. Abby would be a, Abby would be a junior at Richards High School right now if things were different, uh, but they're not, and, um, my brother Kevin, my sister-in-law, Kristen, have decided to join the John McNicholas Pediatric Brain Cancer Foundation Group, Live Like John, Live Like Abby, um, dedicated to finding a cure for pediatric cancer. The money that, that, um, you guys have so generously donated to us will be used to support a very specific group of researchers at Lurie Children's Hospital. We're working specifically on brain cancers among children, because one of the things about, about, um, cancer, especially pediatric cancer and pediatric brain cancer in particular, is that there are no, most of the treatments are made for adults, there's not a whole lot of, of pediatric treatments, so they're trying to come up with some breakthroughs and find ways, um, to fight this. So, on behalf of my brother Kevin, my sister-in-law Kristen, members of our board, Gary Gudino, uh, Kim Bohannick, Karen O'Day, and myself, I, I sincerely appreciate this, and, and we are, we are... Austro, get the number here, this is, this is incredible, thank you very much.
More checks. More checks, so, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. And thanks to everybody that participates in Fall on the Green, a wonderful community event. Profits of that go to support charities such as we presented tonight, thank you. All right, number six on the agenda is presentation from our Forest Preserve District of Cook County.
The dean is gonna drop a screen there, please, thank you, sir, I appreciate it. So, my name's Kevin, and I work for the Forest Reserve of Cook County, and I'm really delighted to be here, this is fun for me to talk about the forest preserves and, uh, what we're doing here. I'm gonna talk about a little about the history, all that the forest preserves offer the residents of Cook County today, and where we're going. Forest preserves have stayed open during the pandemic. By some counts, we have seen twice as many people on our trails, uh, than typical throughout the world. People saw just how important public open spaces are. Uh, the forest reserves worked hard to be open and available throughout the pandemic, we still are. Uh, within that, we tried to be a resource for people to be outside their homes and to be out in nature. Little bit of history here, the forest reserves exist because more than a hundred years ago, local visionary saw the importance of protecting and preserving the natural land, a good thing they did. In the eighteen hundreds, Cook County was at a very early stage of European development. You can see that urban development shown in red was just beginning. By nineteen hundred, Chicago was the fastest-growing city in America, and advocates recognized that without setting aside land as green space, we would lose natural open space in Cook County. As you can see from the two thousand fifteen map over on the right, one of the most densely populated counties in the entire United States of America, there are very few undeveloped areas, so take a look at those shapes. That is essentially a map of the forest reserve, the largest, uh, green shape, and the lower, uh, part of the map is the palest area, and Oaklawn is just to the east of that, of course. Today, the forest preserves of Cook County covers nearly seventy thousand acres, that's eleven percent of the county's total area. The forest reserves are in every part of Cook County, but most are outside the city, but there are some preserves in Chicago also. The closest one to where we are, uh, sitting tonight is Dan Ryan Woods, a tiny little green island to the east of Oaklawn. The Illinois State Legislature formed the Forester District of Cook County in nineteen fourteen, so, and we are now in our second century. We are a separate unit of government, connected to but distinct from Cook County. The original mission of the forest reserves is still our guide today, to protect and preserve the public open spaces in their natural state, education, pleasure, recreation of the public. We're a bit different than a park district, we're more like a state park or a national park, a place to go and experience nature. The forest reserves are a place where native plants and animals thrive, we offer visitors options for adventure and fun, and fun is important, because if you don't love something and have fun there, you're not gonna take care of it. Thousands of people of types of plants and animals depend on the natural areas in the forest reserves of Cook County. The plants and animals depend on this natural area. This is a success story, a picture of a North American river otter, which returned to this region after a hundred years thanks to restored healthy environments. So, for river otters to survive like that, for what, native wildlife species to thrive, the natural areas must be healthy. Cook County is the most ecologically diverse county in all of Illinois. Basically, what that means is we have more different plants and animals here in Cook County than anywhere in the state of Illinois. The forest preserves protect woodlands, wetlands, prairies, and savannas, these lands are each an ecosystem, think of them as neighbors, neighborhoods that depend upon each other, plants and animals, insects and other organisms that live together. A big reason these animals have returned is because of our forest reserves staff and volunteers ecological restoration. Most people think that nature can take care of itself, that nature in urban areas needs our help to remain healthy. Remember, we're the second most populated, uh, county area in the entire United States next to Los Angeles. We used to think that it was enough to protect the land and set it aside, but roadways, pollution, invasive plants, the changing climate, which is all too real, all contribute to the degradation of ecosystems. Our restoration work is guided by a plan. Today, more than fourteen thousand acres are under current restoration or active management, this is more than twice as much as a decade ago. The work includes everything from helping native plants by using prescribed fires, removing old drain tiles from what had been agricultural fields, clearing brush and planting native seeds by volunteers and staff. Notice in the top picture, before picture, it's rather dark there, and the bottom picture, sunlight. The sunlight getting the forest floor is very key to a healthy environment. Conservation Corps, restoration work is done by award-winning conservation corps programs. You may have heard of Friends of the Forest Preserves, that's what these, uh, young people are employed by, right there. Summer and year-round programs mobilize more than three hundred participants each year to restore natural areas. Two-thirds of the participants are high school youth, three-quarters are people of color. Within all these great places, there are so many ways to have a great time. Most Cook County residents are within twenty to thirty minutes car ride away from a forest reserve to explore. Here in Oaklawn, you're only like, maybe ten. The forest preserves also provides year-round programming and activities for individuals, families, and groups. Create your own adventure. We have more than three hu- three hundred fifty miles of trails that take you through all sorts of local terrain and different ecosystems. Here in Oaklawn, palest region trails are closest to us here. Public camping, I spent the night at Bullfrog, Bullfrog Lake there, it's quite a place, you gotta see it. In two thousand fifteen, we opened five campgrounds, these are really popular, the number of campers has increased every year, you can camp in cabins, bunkhouses, a tent, recreational vehicle, and we know that many city people have never camped, but we make it easy, we rent tents, sleeping bags, flashlights, and more. Camp Sullivan is also very close to here. Forty managed lakes, bodies of water for recreational fishing, we have launches along rivers and some of our lakes to bring out a canoe or a kayak. Six nature centers, those of you who have been to Little Red Schoolhouse Nature Center, you're here in Sagwa Environmental Learning, sir, you know what I'm talking about here, we have six of them throughout the preserves. They host programs, more than one thousand five hundred annual events, nearly all free. How about an owl prowel hike, how about a solstice bonfire, archery lessons, how to paint or photograph nature, all variety of programs. Among our crown jewels are our closest partners, Brookfield Zoo and the Chicago Botanic Garden. Few people realize the zoo and garden are on forest preserves' land, and that we help support these institutions. The forest preserves are a great place to get healthy. Being in nature, research has shown that the benefits of just spending time in nature includes lowered blood pressure, increased brain activity, improved sweet, sleep quality. Our lands are the largest clean air resource in the region, and all that undeveloped land helps keep our water cleaner, too. The forest preserves also mitigates against global warming, our preserves absorb as much greenhouse gas annually as is produced by more than three hundred and thirty thousand cars. Our preserves absorb as much greenhouse gas annually as is produced by more than 330,000 cars. Remember, we are 11% of Cook County. Swallow Cliff Stairs, just reopened last Friday, November 5th, after repair. So you can go up one side and down the other. It's one of the most popular places throughout the county. Also, I want to say that this was an interesting cooperation here. Oaklawn and, Village of Oaklawn and Forests of Cook County cooperated on water main construction south of 143rd Street and west of Harlem in our Tinley Creek area. So this is a great example of a municipality, Village of Oaklawn, coordinating closely with a county agency for water. Very important. So, annual environmental impact with flood control, all that water purification, storing all that carbon, 470 million. Without even stepping foot in a forest, those Cook County residents still benefit, serves each year. Add up these benefits, they provide $470 million in annual environmental impacts. Doesn't even include other benefits, like protecting that river otter or supporting local biodiversity. As you can see, we've been working hard on the forest reserves. We have a commitment to our responsibly service stewards of the land and taxpayer that fund our work. Our Next Century Conservation Plan now frames all our work, connecting people to nature through outdoor activities and programs, restoring 30,000 acres, showcasing the forest's economic value, and making sure that preserves are transparent and good stewards of taxpayer money. So why are two coffee cups up there? Can you imagine you've bought two coffee cups of coffee in the last month? I have. We're reaching a limit on what we can accomplish. We're structurally underfunded for our mission. If we've bought two cups of coffee a month, you're paying, you're helping to pay for the forest preserves with that amount. The amount of one or two cups of coffee a month is the cost per household today to protect 70,000 acres and everything I've just talked about. Less than 1% of a Cook County property tax bill goes to the forest preserves. In many municipalities such as Oaklawn, it's less than a half a percent. The average homeowner in Cook County pays $3 to $4 per month toward the preserves. Advocates for the forest reserves have proposed a referendum to bring in more resources for the forest reserves. Our Board of Commissioners has voted to put it on the ballot for the November 22 election. So come visit. We hope to see you there. Use the forest to be active, playful, or wrestle. Go outside and experience nature. Visit our interactive map, our website, check out our events page, see what all kinds of free activities we're leading, sign up for our newsletter, follow us on social media. If you want to support, we certainly appreciate you can volunteer your time. I'm specifically a volunteer with the Forests of Cook County. Also, I'm on staff, and I help support the thousands of volunteers with training and supporting and materials. And we can donate the time. Advocate, tell your friends and family, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Who has not spent a lot of time growing up in forest preserves and enjoying that nature that you guys provide?
Absolutely.
It's a great resource. Thanks for coming out, educating us.
Yeah, I'm going to be putting some materials down on the desk downstairs, some maps, fishing guides, and things like that.
Great. Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Number seven, approval of the regular meeting minutes of 2021-19 dated October 26, 2021. Motion, please.
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? Roll call, please.
Trustee Sock?
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Oluniechek?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Motion passes. New business by village trustees. Trustee Desmond?
Thank you, sir.
District two?
Yes, I have a couple of things to go over. I'm pretty excited about something that the mayor and I have been working on in reaction to our seniors talking about a place for them to be able to spend more time in. About July, I asked staff to do field studies of various facilities throughout the village that seniors could gather, because currently they're at the old McGugan School with limited offerings. So staff looked at park district facilities and the library. And what they found out is the library by far was the best option for a couple of reasons. Number one, center of town, very close, easy to get in and out of. Number two, the patronage at the library is significantly down, especially during the day. During the studies, on an average, between 10:00 AM and 2:00 PM, there was about 15 patrons in the library's 70,000-square-foot facility. That's not a lot of use in a library. And so, mayor and I are putting together our presentation. So, we did talk briefly with some of the Park District Board members, and they seemed pretty open to the idea of this concept about creating a senior corner in the library during this period of time to be able to give our seniors a space dedicated to them, truly in the center of town. So this is conceptual right now. But I will tell you that in all the time I've been a trustee and in discussion with the seniors, I will tell you that with the seniors I floated this by, including my own 96-year-old mother, they were very open to the idea and liking coming to the center of the town. So, I look forward to seeing more movement on that. And mayor, did you have anything that you wanted to add on?
Well, I'd like to just include trustee Bud Stalker, who's been working with us, too, on some of these senior issues, including a bus. Bud, I'll let you talk about that in your matter, okay? Anything else, Alex?
Yes, I have a couple other things. I know that we saw the police in here earlier, and we meted them on another fine job that they've done. But what we all need to understand is our police force does a fine job every day out there in the street. And there are a lot of things that they do. This is just one beaming example, chief, of the fine work that the police department does. And I can tell you that within the last six months, we can name out multiple. But what's really, really enjoyable is when you see awards going to officers like Officer John Vasquez, who received the life-saving award at a village board of trustees meeting, and has been selected this year's VFW Officer of the Year, which the ceremony will be December 2nd. Again, just out there getting, doing his job to make sure that he protects us and going above and beyond. And I'm very happy to see that we have six new officer positions that we are going to be, or placement officer positions that we are, as a board, are going to be voting on at this meeting in the upcoming vote. And I know that everybody here at this board, this board has been united and unanimous on supporting our police and looking to properly fund our police, and also give our police department the tools to be successful. So you can count on that support that is going to continue. And then, finally, we do have a ordinance. I know that we've talked a lot about rat and rodent abatement. I commend staff that after looking at, fact-based, looking at the information on where the issues are coming from and identifying that the top three issues with, with the rat abatement is multifamily housing, rental properties, and in our business community. So we have a very proactive ordinance coming up that we're going to be voting on that will address those issues. Now, it doesn't take away us as residents and our issues of making sure we're not doing ground feeding, making sure that we're cleaning up after our pests, our pests, our dogs. I got a puppy. He's a pest now. But clean up after our dogs, and making sure that we're making our garbage, keeping our garbage in garbage cans, and making sure that if we do have issues with garbage cans holes, that we are notifying staff so we can get those replaced. But again, this is a commitment that this board has made that we are looking to continue to address the rodent issue. And again, staff did a tremendous job of gathering all the phone calls and all of the inspections that they've done for, Tom, was it about the last year or? I don't, the data sample I was looking at was six months to a year. Do you recall what it is?
We started keeping better records beginning in July. We've seen those heat maps. Prior to that, I can't speak to how effective and how much data we had.
Yeah, so we're going fact-based with trying to solve a problem that we really need to solve. So, other than that, I don't have anything.
Thank you, trustee Oluniechek. District three, Paul Mallow?
Thank you, mayor. I did have a few things this evening. Speaking with residents regarding quiet zones, we do have three quiet zones, at least three, starting at Central Avenue, 54th Avenue, and 52nd Avenue, where the trains are not supposed to be blowing their horns. We've had complaints about them blowing their horns. So with staff looking into it, Jeff Sebeck really kind of headed this issue, reaching out to the trains and finding out that there are times when they do need to blow their horns, because at 4:00 AM, when you hear those things go off, man, they are loud. And they just, they'll wake, they'll wake the house. And I can't imagine living closer than I do right now over on 99th and Cicero, but being able to hear those horns from there, it's pretty tremendous. But they are allowed to blow the horns when there is work being done in the area, which I didn't know before. So sometimes when you hear them, there may be a reason that you hear them. So going forward, if you do hear them, if you do have cameras, things like that, and that's recorded, we can look into the reason that the horns were blown at that time, so. The second thing is in regards to Santa on the Green. We will be hosting Santa on the Green on November 7th. I know we do have another meeting before that time, but I just wanted to kind of give everybody heads up, save the date, November 27th, Saturday after Thanksgiving. We will be out on the green with, I believe Santa's coming in. Is that, is that what's happening? Yeah.
It snows. Otherwise, we got them a helicopter.
Okay, right. So Santa and Mrs. Claus will be there. It'll be very similar to what we did last year. We will have an opportunity for the kids to mail letters to Santa. We ask for a self-addressed stamped envelope so that we can return the letters that Santa gives us for the kids to go back to them, so. But more to come for that, for that in the next meeting. The last thing is the Chamber of Commerce is having an event. They are typically part of the Santa on the Green event. They are hosting a shop local event. It's basically started right now, November 1st through December 31st. And what they do is basically, if you shop Oaklawn, if you have receipts, you bring those receipts in to numerous locations, the Pavilion, Oakview Center, the Oaklawn Ice Arena, the Racket Club, Oaklawn Park District Administrative Building. And if you spend $100 in Oaklawn, you will be entered into the raffle to win even bigger money to be able to spend in Oaklawn for different gift cards. So, just so you're aware of that, that is something that the Chamber is doing, and that's all I have.
Thank you, trustee. District four, trustee Pembroke?
No new business.
District five, trustee Stalker?
Yeah, as Mayor Vorder mentioned, Terry and I were at the McGugan School today. There was a senior fair there presented by Representative Marie Newman. There were representatives from many of the social services in the Village of Oaklawn and many of the political organizations that work here. It was well-attended, and I think the seniors got a lot of benefit out of it, especially during a time where we're all trying to find out what kind of insurance we should have next year. Many of the insurance companies were there to answer some of the difficult questions about Medicare and Medicare Advantage, Medigap coverage, and what do you need, and where can you get it, who can you talk to. The second thing that Ms. Newman did, Terry and I went down and talked to her at her office a couple of weeks ago. And she mentioned today that she's bringing together the communities in Worth Township to try to re-establish a better bus service for the whole township. In the past, some villages have had bus services for seniors, seniors who cannot drive or choose not to. Many still continue to have that service. But in Oaklawn, it was found to be very expensive. We observed a population of about 100 seniors over the period of a year. And it was costing about $100,000 to run that bus service. If we can bring this together so that Worth Township will sponsor the program, the villagers would donate, we could donate much less than $100,000 and have a much better service and have a broader service area. So that's something that Representative Newman is doing right now. And I'll give you more reporting on that as time goes by.
The third item is that I want to thank everybody who came out for the Turkey Trot at St. Linus last weekend. It was well-attended, and I live right across the street from the school. It was great to see all the people out exercising, raising money for St. Linus, and it was a great day. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Stalker. District six, trustee Sock?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just two quick comments. I just wanted to congratulate St. Catherine's Men's Club on another successful blood drive this past Sunday at St. Catherine's and to the St. Catherine's Varsity Football Team, who made it to the championship game, but valiantly fought but lost to Most Holy Redeemer. But they put up a good fight, had a good season, so. That's all I have. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, trustee. Those managers report.
Thank you, mayor. I just wanted to comment on some of the people here earlier talking about general lawlessness in town. And I don't think it is specific to one area. I think we're all experiencing it. And, you know, the idea or hope that we might have police officers patrolling, you know, stop signs or areas where cars are drag racing like they do in the first district or by the 218 Administrative Building is unrealistic when we have people carjacking, driving through neighborhoods in the middle of the night, stealing cars, shooting guns. The answer is our society and the general disdain that we're allowing people to have for our police officers in particular. And I see it, you know, you follow cars, they just roll through stop signs, seemingly innocent as it is, but it's just a symptom of a bigger problem. And the bigger problem is people don't respect authority, and we have elected officials who don't want to hold people accountable. Carjackers going in and out of Cook County Jail. There's one website that counts how many dangerous felons are in and out of jail, released after armed violence, only to kill or rob again. I'm not trying to be melodramatic about this, but the answer is it's our society. People finally stepping up and saying no more, holding elected officials accountable, supporting our police. I'm not suggesting anybody should engage these people who are drag racing, blowing stop signs. And yes, we can erect stop signs, and yes, you can call 911. But until we, as a society, start getting vocal about this, I talked about it even at our Fall on the Green Festival, young kids just absolutely disrespectful to our police, to elders. It's a scary time. So, you know, I'm sympathetic. We do get calls from people asking about, you know, traffic controls and speed bumps, and you'd like to think that that will do something. There are problems with that, of course, as it comes to snow plowing and other matters. But I really think the bigger issue here is this general sense of disdain and lack of respect for authority. And, you know, in Oaklawn, thankfully, and to the chief's point, I now get two different emails. I get my own, and I get the former village manager, who was the former police chief. So inbox was flooded with atta boys and atta ladies, atta girls, from FBI people, from federal prosecutors, from retired DEA agents. But they can't be an army on their own. We have to support them. Or we are going to face, you know, more and more problems and more and more crime coming to our front doors. So I just, I felt, I wanted to say something to those people, because I share their frustration. It is, it is, you feel helpless when you see that, and the general disdain that people have for our police and the lack of fear. And I think that's what we need to restore, you know, respect for authority and a little bit of fear. Still that in our young generation. If you don't act up, you don't, you don't have any trouble with the police. So I just wanted to make that comment, and that's all I have.
Thank you, village manager. But if I could just add to that, you know, as a police officer, one of the most common complaints I saw throughout my entire career is stop sign violations and speeding. And with the exception of these extreme cases of drag racing in 90 mile-an-hour situations, most of these complaints are just the residents in the neighborhood themselves. The average person driving down the street, not paying attention to the 25 mile-an-hour speed limit. Maybe they're busy, maybe their minds are someplace, maybe they got to get to work. But most of the time, when I work the radar on these kind of complaints, I'm stopping the guy that lives down the street to tell me, I'm the guy that made the complaint. Yeah, well, you're 15 miles over the speed limit. So I would ask most people to be aware, to be courteous of their neighborhood, okay? Realize that what they're doing might just impact the quality, the safety of the community. So please, just drive safely. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, on to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine, and they have been brought forward at the direction of the Board of Trustees. Village manager. village manager, or village committees, and will be enacted with one motion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. A is a request Board of Trustees approval and direction to the Police and Fire Commission to hire six patrol officers from the current eligibility list due to retirement. B, a request from the Board of Trustees approval of the Zoning and Planning Commission recommendation for an impervious surface variation at 147 South Merton Avenue. And C is ordinance 212020 approving that. D, ordinance 212021 and ordinance amending certain provisions of the Oaklawn Village Code pertaining to rodent control. E, ordinance 212022 and ordinance amending certain sections of Title II, Chapter 6 of the Village Code titled Board of Fire and Police Commissioners. And number F, Resolution 2120-62, a resolution authorizing a sixth amendment to the credit agreement with the First Midwest Bank. A motion?
Motion approved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? Roll call, please.
Trustee Sock?
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Olenichak?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Motion is approved. Okay, number 11 is appeal of an adverse decision by the Zoning and Planning Commission vote to deny for a parking variation at 4040 West 111th Street. A motion, please?
Motion.
A motion to approve?
Second.
A second? Roll call, please.
Trustee Sock?
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Olenichak?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Motion passes. Number 12, the village clerks report.
We have disbursement resolution number 2021-20D dated November 9, 2021 in the amount of $15,967,029.62.
A motion to pay the bills, please?
Motion through.
A second?
A second.
Roll call?
Trustee Sock?
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Olenichak?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Motion approved.
No other new business.
Okay, next is the village president's report. November 11th is Veterans Day. This week, the Village of Oaklawn and myself have participated in many rewarding veteran memorials and celebrations. And I had the pleasure to be a guest speaker at St. Xavier's University Day dedicated a veteran's memorial. And I want to thank the university in these times when certain people in our society are bent on destroying these kind of things, for them to have the courage to build one. I was honored, many veterans were there, I appreciate it. And then Hometown Middle School did an event on Friday for the entire school, and they've been doing this for a couple of years. They invite the veterans from the area, and maybe there was 150 of them there. I was a guest speaker there, too, and had a chance to go around and visit each and every classroom and talk a little bit about America and what and how this country was built. And without the veterans, how this country might not be what it is we know now. And that was very rewarding. I appreciate the staff of Hometown Middle School, District 123, for taking the time not only to recognize and honor veterans, but to educate and instill in their children the service and the value of America and the people that have made it important. And on November 11th, the VFW, our VFW here Johnson Philip Post, will be holding an event honoring the veterans on November 11th, 10:45, right out here by the library at our memorial on the village green. And I would like to encourage all who can to come out for that event. We'll have guest speakers, our Congresswoman will be there, I will be speaking. We have some of the surrounding mayors that'll be there, and we'll have plenty of veterans there, too. So please, if you are free and you can attend, please make an effort to do it. That's all I have, and we'll move on to 14 for an adjournment. A motion to adjourn?
So.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Never heard that ever. Thank you for coming out, everybody.